I'm Phil Ward.
But, you know, it's something that within my heart and my wife's heart, my wife has taken care of this bill. And it's getting a little high. You're having thirty dollars per week for a school, and we're gonna pay to pick schools. So if you're free now, you know, you're talking some money, a lot of money. But if people would do donations, hand drive scores, or penny drive, whatever, and that would bring the cost way down. But I tell everybody, the principal of Midway, that, you know, it's a lot easier for me to buy food. And I keep invoices, if anybody would like to send. I went to the county, the county did give me a thousand dollar grant. That went real fast because there was a dump pump in that basement where we had our food pantry that temporarily went out. That's three hundred fifty dollars, so something. And I lost a lot of food over the last rainstorm we had. We are moving, within a couple of months, we're on Cherry Street, we're now Church of God in the basement. We're moving downtown to the old city hall, Hamlin City Hall, doing a meeting on February sixth. And I'll give you the keys then. You might have to pay some bills, you know, lucky bills, whatever bill, no other thing else, but, you know, we can do that, you know. But, you know, my main thing is that I'm here today to tell you that you do have a pantry, and what we can, is take care of the kids. And I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll move along here. Well, now, move to our LSIC reports.
He's waiting to get closer. He's kinda acting like I was standing.
Okay, Dave. I'm gonna have Jenny with you, and be your assistant.
I'm the assistant.
Big water mania system. And Miss Tully, I'm Grant, as Mr. Ross.
And look at me for a few years.
He has a twin in part of the bed, I passed him. I thought, why didn't Bruce speak to me? Was Bruce weird or religion?
Fred, not at that time.
I swear, yes.
Yes, sir, we're heading to Dave. Okay, President Presley, members of board, Mr. Superintendent Lucas. I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow the staff of Midway to come and present some of the things that are happening in our school through our Local School Improvement Council. On the back, I, we have put together a PowerPoint presentation. We've also given some folders of some things that we'll have you refer to as we go through the presentation. For those of you who don't know me, by the way, my name is Don Davis, and I'm the principal of Midway. This is my third LSIC presentation, and it doesn't get any easier. So, I ran off and got my clicker, so.
I'm the clicker.
Uh, you can go ahead and move on. Now, as you may know, West Test data has not come back as unofficial. But, of course, last year's data is still available online. So I just wanted to go back a little bit, go back one year to our data, and it wasn't a pretty picture. Last year, we were deemed a priority school. We had, we were in the low thirties in both math and reading and language arts. And of course, by 2020, all schools are expected to be at seventy-five percent. So as I told you last year, there is a lot of work to do in order to get our school where we want it to be. So, click. I put together a presentation with all unofficial data. We can't share that data with you tonight because it is unofficial. And so, I just kinda took out the stuff that I, the unofficial stuff, I had put in, and put in some question marks. So, obviously, we don't know this stuff yet, so Mr. Tully, if you'll move forward.
Yeah, we've been advised that even though you've gotten it, it's still preliminary indicators, so we understand that. I know the time will come, and not too far from it, but we all know.
Right. And Ms. Clayton will be in the same boat as she gives her presentation. If we keep on going through, Mr. Tully, I'll tell you when to stop. Now, I can tell you this, based on unofficial results, I believe we did make some improvements. But, again, it's a belief. I can't tell you for sure. Our participation rate was ninety-nine percent. We had one student who was, we listed as medically fragile. The state denied that, but it is under appeal, so we'll probably find out pretty soon whether or not we're at a hundred percent participation. Our attendance rate for last year, which is five percent of your overall index score, at ninety-seven. And that's data that we can take out of WDEIS, so again, I can share that with you. And again, this is a table that I put together that I really can't, I had to take all the data out, so let's. All right, now we're over the West Test stuff, let's move on. All right. I guess this is probably the most important thing that we'll talk about tonight, is what's on the slide in front of you. And it's how do we plan to improve student achievement? So I'm gonna ask Mr. Tully if he'll step up and talk a little bit about the first thing.
All right, of course, our focus, as you can see, is on reading. And I'm just gonna give you some things. I'll try to not bore you too much and make this as quick as possible because I know Ms. Clayton, she's, she's gonna need a lot of time. Anyway, one of the things that we're trying to address, and number one, was SSR, which is Solved Sustainable Reading. And during the summer, we did a book study called Read aside, Kelly Gallagher. And one of his things, he said that the more students read, their reading level, and of course, their interest level, then their reading ability improves. And based upon that, he even stated that they can improve by at least one grade level per year. But the SSR, we did, every teacher has a set time in their daily schedule this year for SSR. So we allow students to pick out high-interest books, things that they can read. And their reading, between fifteen, twenty minutes, each day. And we have another program through Title One, here at Title One School, it's called First Book. And we were eligible for these free books, which allows you to get free books of high-interest for students. And what's all we pay is the shipping and handling on these. These run between thirty-five and sixty-five cents per book. We've already received about three hundred twenty-five books this year. And I think that last year, I believe, Mr. Davis said that we issued out about seven hundred fifty books to students.
The one thing that the First Book program requested the schools, because the books aren't free, you just have to pay for the shipping and handling, or drive to the warehouse wherever they may, wherever they may be, you can pick them up for free. But they asked that you give the books to the kids to take home. So, it's, you know, since we redeemed a Title One school, we qualified for First Book, and we have been giving books to kids on a constant, regular, constant basis.
And you wouldn't believe, I mean, I didn't realize we had, I guess, counting all the grades, seven hundred fifty books. But I mean, it was almost like Christmas time, every time that we receive those books, and we were passing those books out to the kids. They, they really enjoyed them, and they didn't, as they could tell me, like, the books were valuable, so anyway, that's great. We also participated in another program called Book In, I'm sure they do all this in other schools, new book and program. That's through Pizza Hut. And I, each, each one of these, the teacher designates a number of books that they read during the course of the month to, to make, to meet their goal. If they, if they meet their goal, then they receive a coupon to get a personal pan pizza at Pizza Hut. And that's kind of incentive, and that's what we want to try to do, give the kids incentive, you know, to, to read. And, you know, it's material goods, food, whatever, kids go for it. And this program, it starts in October, and I think it runs through March, I guess, so. The other one, if you look at it, we have, we have high-interest, or high-interest reading material. And again, because of our need in reading, we decided to focus on high-interest level books. And of course, we try to purchase nonfiction-type, high-interest reading materials for students to read throughout the year. And most of the teachers, when we get the money, we, we purchase those types of books. And fortunately, that's what the state is moving towards, nonfiction books. So I have, I know my room's full of different types of books for them to use during SSR time. The next one, Mr. Davis, come up, this is for take a book and leave a book. And basically, what it is, he, he moved those, and I think it might be in your, your handout there, we took a picture.
No, it was on the slideshow.
Oh, on the slideshow, okay. Basically, what that is, is he rolled some books into the hallway. And the students have the option of selecting a book from that, and that's taking a book that they want to read. And then, in turn, what they do is they leave a book, if they've already read a book, or whatever, for other students to use. If in turn, they do not have a book to, to put back, then they can still select a book out of that pile. They read it, and then they return that book. So, and there was a neat thing that I added, that Mr. Davis had seen, that some of the communities doing that. I know a little restaurant down, down the road from me, they have like a little, a little box out there for the kids while they're waiting for the school bus, and they can pull a book out of that. So that really helps as far as the community. And it's that while you're waiting for the bus, the kids can pull a book out, read it, or return it. And, you know, I notice the kids book it, and I see kids, I have, so that's a neat thing that they have. I think, I believe that's, I believe I need to shut up now, right? I'm gonna turn that over to Ms. Gillenwater right there.
I would like to talk to you about our Title One program, which we are very happy about having at Midway. Last year was our first year, and I believe eight to nine years, that we, we seem quite one, so thank you. It's been a big help, I believe. Just the program itself. I'm one of the Title One teachers, my name's Amber Gillenwater, this is the other one, and it's Ashley Bell. And we also have an interventionist for twenty hours a week, and that is Connie Grunion. Most of you know Connie, she taught at school for years, was a principal, and has been in our community, so she knows a lot of the kids. And we work with students in reading and math, and we also work with students in, in fourth through fifth. Ashley and I focus mostly on first through fifth, and our interventionist focuses on kind of ours at first. She also, our interventionist, she works a lot with the IPAC group, if you've heard of IPAC, that's Strategic Awareness because reading research has shown that that's very important for a foundation for kids, you know, to learn how to read and to say. So she works a lot with IPAC groups, and that's good help. As I said, we do reading and math, we go into the classroom and assist students in there. And we also pull students out, and I'll get to that in a minute, on how we identify those students. But we pull them out of the classroom to give them even additional support that they need. Our goal and our focus, obviously, is to improve student achievement, and that is for our lower-performing students. And we have found recently, you know, last year especially, that a lot of, a lot of times, that is the boys in our school. So we're really targeting the boys as well. And those are, those students that we are working with are identified by the data we have gathered, and then we plan our instruction based on that data as well. And a lot of the data includes our West Test results, which, right now, you know, last year's are, you know, still not official. But we, you know, we have, we are using that when we get it. Baseline test, because West Test results were late this year, a lot of our classroom teachers gave baseline tests in the beginning of the year, to kind of see where the students were in the math. Of course, acuity test, we use those results, benchmark results, DIBL, just classroom tests, and observations of the teachers. And then we've also given some fluency tests in reading and math, because we found that a lot of our kids are weak in multiplication and, you know, for reading, for everything. So all of that data gives us a starting point, and lets us know where they're strong, and where they're weak, and what we need to work on. One big test that we use, and we are trying to do it before this week, is FMI and SRI. That is the Scholastic Math Inventory and Scholastic Reading Inventory. It has changed a little bit this year, so we're learning about it. But we like that test because, number one, it's on the computers. And it gets kids that, that feel for the computers, and a test on the computers, just like the West Test was last year, like our Smart Balance is on today. And that just helps them get adjusted to that, to the change of balance test. Another thing that kids really like about it is there is an instant score that they see when they finish. And in West Test, they wait months, and it's kind of, you know. But this, they get to see it right then, this is how you scored, this is how you did. It also adapts and adjusts to the kids, so that it's gonna be a lot like Smart Balance. You know, if that kid's not going very well, then it's gonna kind of give them some problems, you know, that'll be a little easier for them. But if that kid keeps, you know, performing well on that test, then it's going to challenge them. And we even had some kids today that were trying to take one, and they're like, oh my goodness, you know, we gotta question this. But it was really challenging them. But, you know, and the teachers like it because it, you know, provides a good printout for the classroom, and where the students are, and it's instant, you know, it lets them know right away. And it also gives us recommendations based on our standards of, for each kid, on what they need to be working on. So that's what's helpful for us when we pull the school groups. And we also get to collaborate with teachers on what they need, you know, so they'll pull out. Another job of ours is we do workshops. Last year, we did three workshops. We had a homework help workshop, one for math, everyday math, just to let parents know how they can incorporate math every day into their life for kids, and to help some of these parents, because they're really confused with some of this new math that's out there. So we thought that was important. And then the third workshop we had was kind of a fun, not iconic, pally. And we, it was for math, Pi, and we had it around March fourteenth. And then we also incorporated Author's Purpose, Pi, for reading, which is perform, persuade, inform, and anything. So we had a bunch of those. And we also have a couple of categories we started. We have a reading trophy and a math trophy, and do a little competition once again, through Title One. And then we also have, and we haven't started it this year, but we're going to get it again, Monday mystery, Mustangs Monday Math Mystery.
I should not have been asking about those stories.
Yes, I have, they're on my case. It just, you know, get all that going. But anyway, that's some of the things that we do through Title One and the interventionists. C up there is parent educator, we have Jessie Thompson as our parent educator. She works twenty hours, she's wonderful, she coordinates parent volunteers that we need in our classrooms. And she's kind of our go-between, between the school employees and the community and the families. She organizes a lot of, you know, workshops and trainings for the parents and things. And then she assists in the classroom herself, but, so that's been a big help. She works with the Fox Tops, the Stang program, which is our, I think somebody may be talking about that longer. And also, the backpack program that you all heard about tonight, Jessie has been a big help to our counselor with that. She helps her with that backpack program. And D, Twenty-First Century After School, we average about a hundred kids daily. And I believe last year, that was the highest in accounting. So we have a lot of kids and a lot of help for that. They get thirty minutes of homework help, so parents like that. And then after that, they also get to participate in archery, guitar, and physical education, and art and crafts. So the kids really love it, and it helps them get their homework done. And Energy Express, last year we had, this past summer, we had forty students that participated, and that helped them with their reading skills, especially those kids, some of those kids really needed that, and it also gave them a hot meal every day. So we're, so we've heard earlier. And I believe now, somebody else.
It is back to me.
Oh, okay, one more thing, I forgot, Test Talks, I forgot about Test Talks. But it was one other thing we did last year, and we think it really may have helped our scores. But, because we can't say.
Unofficially.
Unofficially. But we sat down, Mr. Davis and the two of us sat down, and some of the teachers, they were helping with that. And we showed the kids their FMI and SR high scores for the year, and also their previous West Test scores, except for the third grade. And we said, okay, here's how you did. And now, we want you to set goals for how you want to do this year, and really encouraged them. And we sat down one on, you know, I mean, like, one kid at a time, not as a whole group, so that we could really talk to that one kid, especially if it was just because they didn't try hard enough, or whatever. And, and they really liked it. They, we made them sign the paper, like it was an official contract, and they, they really thought they knew something. You know, they really set goals, and we had kids even say, when are we gonna get our results? I wanna see you, you know, I met my goals, so, so that's, you know.
Plan on reviewing that when we give the scores.
We get the scores.
We made them, we made them sign blue links. All right, I'm gonna move on to staff development. One of the things that we have promoted at Midway is that if teachers bring in something that is relevant to what they're doing in the classroom, you know, we, we approve that. And then, of course, Ms. Lucas was critical, usually when we approve it, they approve it. And one of the things that, that I require of the staff, when they get staff development, is they have to come back, and they have to present it to the staff, so they're not just keeping it to themselves.
Are you saying like that they give a conference or something?
Yes, yes, well, they, and, for instance, we went to Blade Springs this summer for a couple of days for a staff retreat, and no less than eight of our teachers presented during those two days to the staff from workshops that they had attended. We tried to get a quick turnaround on that, too. Because we learned at a principal's meeting, after thirty days, if you don't use it, you lose it. As a matter of fact, you know, Mr. Linville, at the last principal's meeting, he gave us some resources for Smart Balance. That is in the hands of our teachers already. They've seen it, we put it up in front of them. So they know where those resources are, so they can utilize them. Mr. King put something together for us on Educational Impact, which is a new online professional development site that is provided to priority schools, but I believe Ms. Lucas is gonna make sure that all schools in the county are, have this available to them. We haven't gotten our passwords on that, but we, the principals did get training. I'm really excited about that, because now, you know, when we feel that we need a particular training, we're gonna be able to go on this site and set up the training for our teachers, where they can go in and take the training. And if we have a snow day or something where teachers have to report, what a great way to make that a useful day, where they are getting online training. And they have to pass the test in order to get credit for it as well, to get a certificate. And so, they're gonna have to go through the training, pass the test. Because the questions change, you can take the test as many times as you want, the questions change. So, in order to pass and get that certificate, they're going to have to actually do the training. Not to say, Mr. Tully, we'd never do, we'd ever do that. But also, we did a book study last, last year, because a major problem at our school is reading, particularly with the boys. And it was a book called Read aside, we learned a lot about reading from that book. Again, we got training, principals got training the other day, on close reading, which is a strategy that I won't go into deeply, but it's a strategy that forces students to analyze, analyze text more closely. And the trainer suggested a book, we're gonna order that book for the staff, and we're gonna do a book study on it. Another thing that we've been looking very closely at in our school is the state-adopted high-quality standards. In your packet, in your folder, I know you've heard about them, but there's a two-pager, front and back, it gets right to the point of what the high-quality standards are. We, as a leadership team, we went through the high qualities, each of these high-quality standards. There's a self-reflection that asks you where you're at, as far as the school, on each one of these standards. And you have to rate yourself. So the leadership team, we walked through each one of these standards. It took a few hours to do it. It's, it's, it's a long process when you think about each one. And so, now we're ready to present this to the rest of the staff, to get their feelings on it, to see what they think. Of course, when you talk about our leadership team, we're talking about ten members on it. So you're basically, have half the staff who, who took the self-reflection together, and we came up with a consensus on how to rate ourselves. And so, we're really looking closely at these high-quality standards, and we're trying to put those into practice, and trying to improve ourselves on these. And in the end, it's gonna make our teachers better teachers. It's gonna make me a better principal. And of course, research-based learning strategies. We've shared the Marc, Marcia Tate strategies, the Bill Daggett strategies. Obviously, these are two big gurus when it comes to education with the teachers. And, you know, we expect to see those strategies in, within the classroom as well. But it's just not something on a piece of paper, to them, we're looking for those when we go into the classroom, to see that they're being implemented. All right, click. This is a picture of a, a display of our take a book, leave a book. We have a book rack. Students can take any book off that rack they want. I know we say leave a book, but bottom line is, if they take a book and they don't bring it back, it's still a great thing. And there's another display that's right beside it, so that they can see the books a little bit better. I showed, Ashley was able to show that to Ms. Lucas today, as she visited our school. That's just the, the book that we're gonna do a book study on. Keep going. And this is where I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bell.
I want to share a few things that Midway's doing to improve school climate. Number one is Project Wisdom, and if you look at the paper, it says, Remember, Remembering Section Relatives in your file. This is a character education program. And if you look, it says that serves communities, and that's the character part that you're looking on. And it gives some information about nine eleven, and then it talks about it being a sad event, also heartwarming stories on how you help people in need. And then there's a comment from President Barack Obama that talks about simple acts of kindness. And then, in the next paragraph, it relates to how we can do random acts of kindness in our own lives. It's a really good character ed program. Mr. Davis reads it every morning. And he is thinking about turning it over to the student council members, who will be reading the program. As soon as we say the pledge, he comes on and he gives his words of wisdom. The student council will start doing it as well. And I feel it's a good start to the day, whenever we begin, and it maybe helps students make good choices, maybe make them think about how they can be a better person. Awesome Authors, which I think we do have a picture of this in the slide, is it in the slide? Okay. Awesome Authors is, it's on our bulletin board near cafeteria, so everybody can see it. It's where the teachers choose a student writing piece, that is, it's placed on the bulletin board, and the teacher provides descriptive feedback. I don't know if you can see it in the picture, but there isn't, there's descriptive feedback from the teacher on the writing piece. And what's good about it is, is that it always doesn't have to be the best, the person who writes the best. Everybody gets a chance. A teacher can choose to, maybe somebody who's struggled writing, maybe they can choose. They, this is really good piece, so let's put this up here for them, they look, and they can see the descriptive feedback. And I think it can help students see, see that they can get a chance also. It just doesn't always go to the student who's always the best writer. The Middle Health Counselor is part of a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Greater Genoa Valley Foundation. We'll see this a little bit later, too, which will serve at Midway, and they will serve either one to two, one or two days a week. And it's slated, hopefully, to begin at the end of October. Our High Achievement Board, which is also near the cafeteria, where everybody can see it. It's going to recognize students who are, who did very well on West Test, Young Writers, Spelling Bee, and Math Build Day. I believe there's, it's in here, too, I think, the slide picture. And we are continuing our Responsible Students Program, Mustang for Success, if you look, the S-T-A-N-G is highlighted. And the S stands for strive for success, the T stands for treat others with respect, the A stands for attend school daily, the N stands for need to, need to be prepared, and the G stands for get to school on time, and you stay all day. Those are things that we want our students to do. And if they do these things, they receive a point, and then an incentive is given, is given every nine weeks. And if they do these things, they receive a point and then an incentive is given, is given every nine weeks. Wait, sorry. Okay, there is our awesome, our awesome authors. Oh, okay. I thought, I thought, I thought there was more pictures. I thought there was more pictures. Okay, I thought there was more. Never mind. Okay, and this is some of the improvement that we have done for the school from a techno, technological standpoint. And also from a fiscal standpoint to make the building look, to operate better. We had new gutters on the lower end of the building, which I think replaced all the, all the gutter, I think we have all new gutters. We have uh, two new mobile labs, which uh, it helps with testing, West Virginia rides. And it, it helps students be on track with things whenever all the other labs are full. It's also helping with SRI and SMI this week because we have a lot of students to test. Uh, interactive projectors. Uh, this is Smart Links, which I believe that's it right up there. It will replace all the older, the older data projectors. And I think we've ordered thirteen. And the mini laptops for grades three, 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 five replaces the old extended labs, uh, the old extended labs. And Mr. Davis received a new door for his office so he can have confidential meetings. And I think that is a very good, good thing that he has.
It was really his teachers out there. It all is good too. He has a keep with me.
And Mr. Davis said.
Can you go, can you go back for it?
Yes. That gets turned back over to you.
Okay, I'm going to talk about programs, awards and grants over the past year. Uh, if you'll pull in your packet, there's a newspaper article from the Charleston Gazette where, and I highlighted where the part from Midway Elementary starts. Where we received a twenty thousand dollar grant as, for a mental health coun, counselor. As uh, Ms. Bell said, we hope to get that person in place before the end of October to work one or two days a week. It looks like with, when we wrote the grant, we wrote for twenty hoping to get ten. But when the lady visited the school, uh, she was, uh, she was impressed with what we were doing. So we ended up getting the whole twenty. And so with that, we could probably go two days a week on this mental health counselor. We'll be partnering with Prostera Center in order to do that. Also, uh, one of our teachers, Amanda Sowers, uh, got a, a very high award from the Haley Harless Foundation. She was the distinguished teacher of the year. In your packet, uh, there's the speech that was given. It says Haley Harless distinguished teacher, her speech at the top. You get a chance to, some really good things said about Ms. Harless. And it basically tells you what the award is rather than me trying to explain it to you. It does tell you what the award is all about. Uh, so if you can get a ch, chance to read that. Can you go to the, to your booth before we go back? Keep going, keep going, keep going. Right there. There's Ms. Uh, Sowers with uh, Ms. Lucas and myself at the. Did I say Ms. Harless?
No.
Okay.
I didn't recognize you.
At the banquet and, and Ms. Lucas will tell you that it was a very, very nice banquet. And then uh, also we have these, we found out today, we have the Linky County Service Personnel Employee of the Year and our secretary, Ms. Shirley Justice. And that's the smile that our kids see every day when they come in. They call her Ms. Shirley and uh, my goodness, I've never seen some, a person get so many hugs. The kids stop on their way through the door and go right in the office, give her a hug before they go on down the hall. And then uh, next we, we're the, you'll take a look in your packet again. Uh, you'll see a certificate, not the Let's Move one. Maybe there's one in your packet. Yeah, that's it. I don't have one in mine. Uh, a certificate that uh, we got, this is Ms. Harless in Washington DC, this past Saturday. She went to Washington DC and received our award. We were one of two schools in West Virginia honored by the Healthier Generations uh, Foundation. And both schools got the Bronze Award. There were only seven schools in the state of West Virginia last year to get the award. So it is really a high honor to get that. And uh, I'm sure, I've been talking to Ms. Harless, she enjoyed her trip to DC and picked that up as well. Um, we were also named, uh, this is a, through Bill Clinton's over the Let's Move Act of Schools, uh, uh, national, national, along with Michelle Obama. We received a letter from Michelle Obama uh, saying that we were a, we've been selected as a Let's Move Act of School. And there's also a certificate in there that we got uh, from that foundation as well. And also in your packet, there, I put some, um, some of the letters. I'd like to give a copy of this to Sean in the Linky Journal as well. Uh, matter of fact, I'll just give you this folder.
Thanks, sir.
Um, there's a press release in there with information about our award for the Healthier Generations Bronze. And go back a little, go back one. Also, uh, as part of our presentation, we'd like to tell you about some of our academic facility needs. Always a counselor is up there. I'm sure that's with every, every school, they'd like to have a full-time counselor. But well, the mental health counselor will help us to fill part of that need. And of course, the technology specialist. At Midway, there's no uh, no place to store things. I got a donation from Curry's Funeral Home, thirty-seven chairs and no place to put them. Um, every time, every time we put those chairs out, people sit in them, they're, they could still smell that funeral home smell. And it probably, uh, our biggest concern at Midway is uh, our intercom system. We, we go through a phone system, um, where we make our announcements. And uh, if, if somebody's on the phone, then they won't hear, like if I were to call Code Red. Uh, then it won't go through their phone because they're on the phone. And of course, it's also a concern that, for the, if there's kids on the playground. So uh, there are speakers outside, but we don't, they, as far as, I know there, I don't have any way of operating those speakers. So uh, we just strictly go through that phone system. Um, and of course, uh, back up, Mr. Tolling, I need to finish going through the other safety stuff. Right here. Some other things that we have as far as student safety. We have the front and back gates, uh, that we can operate from inside the building, that we can buzz cars through. We have the electronic fob system to get into the building. Um, we've made one entrance and exit for all students and parents. Now staff can come in the other doors with their fobs, but we expect all students and parents to come through the main entrance only. Uh, on the playground, because you know, where we're located, we're right there by corridor G. You can hit it with a rock from the back parking lot. Uh, it's important to have staff stationed near the, the, the basketball court. So it's, you know, somebody could take one of our kids and, and go pretty easily being that close to corridor G. So we make sure that we have people stationed back there when the kids are outside. Um, of course, we do our Code Red procedures and fire drills. And uh, we have a crisis intervention uh, team as well. And we have an evacuation plan. If we had to leave the school, the, our local church that we would take the kids to. So we have all that in place as far as student safety goes. And of course, we would like to thank you. And if you have any questions for us, we'd be, we'll try to answer them.
Uh, any members of the board anything to take?
You all know, I'm going to ask a question.
First thing I'd like to do, um, is thank uh, Mr. Davis, Mr. Tolling, Ms. Gilmore, Ms. Bell for being here. Other staff members from Midway here, I'd like to, Mr. Brown is here. Anybody else from the staff in Midway? I just appreciate all you all coming out here tonight. You know, this is kind of extra rich for a duty. Don't get paid for it, I don't think. We do appreciate you, uh, your interest in coming out here. Mr. Davis doesn't have much choice. Uh, the clicker, I think he volunteered. We do appreciate that. Uh, another thing I'd like to do, I was remiss a while ago, also part of our traveling theme. Uh, Jeff Mickiv was assistant superintendent of schools. I even had myself a note here to make sure I did this and I did do it. And if you've ever called the Bren, or the board office, you want to talk to the superintendent, well, you got her or you got Brendan Powell. And it's been that way for several years. So I just want to mention that. A couple of things though. One, obviously, uh, I think I said for all board, our number one priority is student safety. And I'm glad, Mr. Davis, that you addressed that towards the end of your session here. Uh, and as Mr. Mickiv knows, it's been a recent thing we've been talking about as far as um, a new program, as far as intruders and all. And eventually, we anticipate that you will have some type of drills on that similar to a fire drill.
I'm going October sixth to uh, an active shooter training at the Hamlet Community Center. So uh, once I get that training, I would say that this.
Well, like I say, I know it's a little bit premature at this time, but it's like I say, we, Mr. Mickiv and I, we've been talking about a program that we found out about. And we're going to try to enact it at all of our schools. But you know, that's our number one priority is student safety. And as long as you know, unfortunately, in the country today, and I guess apparently the world, uh, things, there are crazy people out there. And we want to be prepared for that. So we're trying to uh, find out what we can. We've, Jeff's been working on that. Come up with uh, uh, we, some things that are going to other places that we can make sure, should we ever have such a horrible thing happen in our county, that, that you all would be prepared in different schools. So uh, you know, we'll look forward to, maybe the next time you can share with us how you do this. And what's the second priority? We have a student achievement. And I know you can't tell us anything about it. But we can see a lot of the different activities that you all are doing and having Title I supplements, many of those things do. So all these things hopefully will fit in, those will see, forgiveness improvement, um, more improvement. But uh, you know, those are our primary, uh, beneficence that we have. Uh, we've noted some of your needs there, Mr. Davis, and we understand that. Um, it's a difficult thing at Midway. One, you're kind of running out of room. Uh, and uh, as far as facilities are concerned, you know, it's always going to be an issue for us to deal with. But we do appreciate all of what you do and all your staff does and the parents that, that uh, work at the school at Midway. That come and, and service volunteers and help in many different places. We appreciate all their work. And if you have a need, you can always share that with Ms. Lucas. And if you need anything, you can contact us and we'll be there to do anything we can do to help that. So appreciate your all day, Mr. coming out tonight.
Thank you. And Ms. Blake, thank you again for being a very exercise and again, let us go first.
Okay.
Well, one thing for sure, I can't be doing this presentation from over here with the camera behind me. So I'm not going to.